Okay, is everybody seated?
They are.
Perfect, okay, I can hear you just barely. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting, we'll reconvene to public session, and I'll begin with a report of action from our students' session. On a motion by Mrs. Adams and the second by Mr. Buffalo, and on a unanimous vote, we approve the contact contract for Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Academic Affairs, Isabel Sager. And that's the extent of our report. And moving on to item 7.1, which is a public comment announcement. I'll summarize. Governor Newsom issued two executive orders. Portions of these orders relax part of the Brown Act, and in part, the orders allow elected officials to attend the meeting via teleconference without having to admit members of the public into the location from which they are participating. And orders that such a body need not make available any physical location from which members of the public may observe the meeting and offer public comment. People who wish to make public comments may do so in person, so long as they are wearing a face covering adhering to social distancing protocols and they have their temperatures taken in the room. If they would rather not attend in person but wish to share a comment, we invite people to participate via Zoom. In order to do this, they need to submit their request to Ms. McClure prior to this meeting at 7:00 a.m. And public comments are limited by board policy to five minutes per person. So we'll move on to 8.1, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we all stand and Mr. Buffalo will give you the.
I pledge the flag. Put your hand over your heart and give me my pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.1, open forum on non-agenda items. And I'd like to confirm that we do not have any comments on those agenda items. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Perfect. So we'll move on to item 10 point, uh, excuse me, 11.1, and that is presentation by the McCann Group.
Great, thank you, trustee. Herman, good to be here with everyone. I do have a PowerPoint. I don't know if there can call up. I can also share my screen if necessary to do that. Oh, there we go, okay. Did everybody see that? Okay, great. So good to be down here once again. I'm Mark McDonald with the McCann Group. We actually just changed the name to MGI Advocacy. So still a little continuity there, but the same, you know, quality representation on both boards. Next slide. And that's me, next slide. I wanted to give you a little bit of information on how we work. We do a conference call every Monday, and Betsy participates in that conference call. And what that is, is we provide up-to-date information on bills that have been introduced or regulations from either the chancellor's office or other government agencies that would have impact on Antelope Valley or other community college districts. And then Betsy takes the lead and gets that down to your experts on the ground and gets feedback to me so that I'm able to better represent you in the Capitol and in the chancellor's office and provide really how those regulations or bills will impact your college moving forward. Next slide. Go over briefly the 2021 budget that was put into place. Next slide. The budget was really built on deferrals. There were $11 billion in deferrals for Proposition 98, which included $1.5 billion for community colleges, which basically meant that you were running programs this year that you weren't going to get paid for until next year. There were some positives that came out of the budget negotiations. Next slide. We were able to get $120 million in a block grant for COVID-19 relief funds. It was pretty, most of the money that came from the state at least was pretty flexible and allowed you to cover expenses that were brought on by the pandemic. There was $11 million in funding for undocumented students, and this came in when it was believed that the CARES Act funding would not be available for unaccompanied students. And then there was an extension of the funding formula whole harmless for an additional two years. Next slide. And then two other positives that came out of it was reduction in pension costs for cowherds and cowsters by about 2% each. And this was actually non-Proposition 98 money. So it was not money that would have gone into your budget otherwise. And it was able to buy down costs to free up some operating expenses for the district. Next slide. And then just, you know, everyone's always curious about what's going on with CalBright. They were reduced by $5 million in ongoing from $20 million, and then they had a reduction in their $100 million in one-time money by $40 million. But they continue to operate and are moving forward. Next slide. So I wanted to give you a quick preview of what we expect for next year. The Legislative Analyst Office, which is the the arm, an arm of the legislature that provides economic projections for the legislature and provides recommendations for them, came out with their economic forecast recently. Next slide. It was pretty positive for Proposition 98. What they're estimating is that the downturn hasn't had as large of an effect as thought. And the main reason is because the pandemic hasn't hit high-income earners as much as low-income earners. And California gets most of its tax revenue from high-income earners. And they're estimating that the deferrals could be paid off this year, and there could be $4.2 billion in additional funding for Proposition 98, which would equate to about $460 million for community colleges. Now, I will give one caveat on that is that the Department of Finance comes out with their projections in January, and they're always lower than what the LAL has. And the other thing is a lot of that $4.2 billion in additional funding is in statute that was part of a supplemental payment that was passed in last year's budget. And the LAL was actually recommending that the legislature delete that supplemental payment because the payment was intended to make up for lost funds, but they're saying since there's no lost funds, maybe you don't need to make the supplemental payment. And there also is one other issue. So next slide. We're looking at, the LAL does project structural deficits in the overall budget going out to '24, '25. So they estimate that there's a one-time windfall in the overall budget this year of $26 billion. But going forward, there's going to be shortfalls. So I would imagine that the legislature and the governor are going to want to put a lot of that funding away to cover future shortfalls. The other thing is, while the LAL estimates $26 billion, the governor came out recently and said it's closer to 50. His estimates from the Department of Finance are closer to $15 billion, which is significantly less than what the LAL states. Next slide. Legislation is in review from last year. Just go over a couple major bills that went into effect that'll impact the district next year, this coming year. Next slide. AB 1460 is an ethnic studies mandate, but it's for CSU. But it's going to impact community colleges because CSU is implementing it as a lower division requirement. So at the least, it'll impact your ADTs because students will have to take an ethnic studies course in order to transfer to the CSU and only take 60 more units at the CSU. I will say, one of the discussions in Sacramento is making those ethnic studies courses available through OEI, the Online Education Administrative, so that if you do not have those courses and don't have the faculty to add them, you won't have a huge expense that you'll have to add in order to put those classes online. Next slide. The other bill that went through is gives you some flexibility on your lottery funds. It allows you to use them for food and housing and security grants for students. Little bit of funding, but it gives you some more flexibility in that. And this is going to be another big issue this year, food and housing insecurity for students. Next slide. So there was an education trailer bill. It also dealt with lottery funds for electronics. Allows you to purchase laptops and hotspots and other electronic items. You can use it to purchase those for students if you remain in distance ed mode because of the pandemic. It also put the lieutenant governor as a voting member of the Board of Governors, and she's been at the last meeting. She's the only ex officio member of the Board of Governors now. Next slide. A couple items that we're looking for and we predict will be issues in 2021. Next slide. The baccalaureate degree is going to be another issue. Assemblyman Urbina, Chair of the Higher Education Committee, is going to introduce the bill. It will continue to include the no duplication provisions, but it will allow more than one baccalaureate degree per district and per college. So I know Antelope Valley does have a great baccalaureate program, but it would allow you to add another one potentially. Next slide. Funding formula is going to continue to be reviewed. I don't know if anything major will be made to the funding formula this year. They're trying to get better data before they make any changes. And they also want to do runs as to what SB 361 would look like in comparison. Next slide. Transfer reform. The committee on the higher-end master plan has identified transfer reform as a top priority this year. So it is an opportunity to maybe increase the way that, the ways that students are able to transfer to UC or look at what are some of the issues with the ADTs? And is there a way to reform those so that it's better for community college students that are trying to transfer to CSU? Next slide. Broadband access is going to be a huge issue this year. Both the Speaker and the Pro-Tam identify this as one of their top priorities, and there have already been about five bills introduced on broadband access. Trying to get it into more of the rural areas where it's not as strong, as well as into urban areas where there are dark spots. Next slide. And then I just wanted to quickly go over what we'll see based on the election results. So Democrats maintain a 2/3 majority in both the Senate and the Assembly. Republicans did pick up a seat in the Assembly, but Democrats would still have a 2/3 majority, just not as much of a majority. And Democrats picked up a seat in the Senate, so they'll have an increased majority in the Senate. And in your area, you know, Senator Wilt and Assemblyman Lackey both had tough races, but they both ended up in the race. So you will have some continuity there. And I know you all have great relationships with those two members. They've been great for this area. I will point out that Labor, you know, lost a number of fights, so maybe California isn't as liberal on certain issues as we think. Relating to community colleges, AB, or Propositions 15 and 16 lost, which were the split rule top property tax and the affirmative action measures. The committees in the legislature, all the chairs will remain the same that deal with community colleges. The one that will change is the Senate Budget Committee. Senator Mitchell won a Los Angeles supervisor seat, so they'll have to change, put a new chair in the Senate Budget Committee. But the other committees will remain the same. And I anticipate for you that Senator Wilt will remain a member and likely remain vice chair of the Senate Education Committee. I don't, I don't see that changing. So with that, I'm happy to, next slide. So happy to take any questions that anybody might have at this point.
I'm glad I had a question for you. First of all, thank you very much for your report. In hearing you, you discussed about the California budget, actually, the income being much higher than was initially predicted in the budget last May. Can you talk a little bit about how that might impact the spring deferrals, especially the one in February and March?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So what the LAL has recommended is with that, and most of that is one-time money, so that's not ongoing money. But what the LAL has recommended is that the legislature look to act early and reverse some of the deferrals at an earlier date. And then hold aside some of that one-time money to see if the economic projections come through and more funding in fact does materialize. They've also recommended that on the overall budget, that the state take half of the windfall and put it in the state's savings account to address future potential budgets. But the first, you're right, the first choice for the legislature, and I think the administration is to address the deferrals, is to, you know, quote-unquote, pay down the credit card before we do anything else.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Mark. We appreciated the presentation.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It's good to be here.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
All right, you too. I have to apologize. Did I skip the approval of this agenda? Somebody answer me into the microphone. Do we need to go back and do 9.1 again?
Yes, sir. Yes, you did.
Thank you. I apologize. Congestion is impacting my brain function. So with your permission, I would like a motion to approve this agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Advice?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Great, now we have an approved agenda. My apologies. And so we'll skip forward then to item 12.1, and I will invite Senator Wilt to swear in our new trustee.
I'm almost as dangerous with the mic as Lou Schultz. Do we have a preference on who goes first? Mr. Reavis, why don't you come up? Do you not get briefed? How do they do this? Okay, good. All right, so first of all, congratulations on your election. You're on two boards now. That's, that's pretty impressive. Okay, so if you can repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Newsom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Michelle.
Good morning.
Look at you, you're ready to go with the hand up and everything. Okay, so you know the drill because Michael did it pretty well. So we're gonna do it again. I state your name.
I, Michelle Harvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon.
Discharge of duties. All right, congratulations. Did I get to do my next thing right? To take a point of personal privilege. First of all, Dr. Herman, I hope you get better. And sorry that you cannot be here today. But just wanted to thank you for your many years of service, as well as your leadership this last year. Having been formerly on a community college Board of Trustees and Board President, I know how much more work that entails. And obviously, no one planned on a pandemic or recession, but you guys as a group had really, you know, stepped up to take care of your students and were able to transition pretty quickly to, you know, an internet platform, distributing, you know, the CARES Act, giving those grants to our students, and then, you know, being able to help those students to have food and security. You guys just did a fabulous job. So on behalf of myself and State Assemblyman Tom Lackey, I have this official California resolution commemorating just a fabulous career in education and Godspeed to whatever you do next. We welcome that. Mr. Schultz, are you gonna stand there? What are you gonna do?
I'm gonna get some air.
I think they're gonna make you stand over there. I don't know where. Yeah. On the, yeah, see that. Well, as you all know, Lou's wrapping up eight years on the Board of Trustees. And I remember when he called me when he was thinking about running, and, because I was on the Board of College of the Canyons at the time, and I said, absolutely, you need to run. You know, the job that you do is just so vitally important, you know, between, you know, empowering our first-generation college students that, you know, leave here and go on to a four-year institution, to all the workforce, workforce development work we do. And you got, I'm very impressed with all you do. And, you know, fact of the matter is, we're on our own out here. You know, we're isolated. We've always been a stepchild to downtown LA. And if we don't do it ourselves, it's just not gonna happen. And you guys know that. You've grasped that vision, and you've moved forward. So Lou, we've known each other a long time. I love you. You're a great guy. Very passionate about your wife, your kids, your grandkids, this community. And I just, I'm really proud to, you know, be able to call you my friend. And I don't know what you're gonna do next. Hopefully, you're sticking around. But you've just been a phenomenal friend to me and a great community leader. And I wanted to really take this opportunity and come out here and honor you with, again, I didn't want Lackey to sign on to this one, but I guess he did want it just to be for me. But again, official California resolution commending you for your service on this board. Congrats.
Thanks.
Don't go away, Lou. You can stay there if you want. Is this okay? Yeah, all right. Well, the college wants to thank you as well. And we've got just a couple of little momentum. I know that we had to extend you one year with the Voting Rights Act and those kinds of things. So, but we really appreciate your service to the college and to the community, and particularly our students. Your attitude is always to take students first, and you've been great support to not only myself, but the entire institution. And the college wants to say thank you. So in a little appreciation, we have an aerial photo of the college for you and a little desk plaque recognizing your commitment and service to the college. And we don't give clocks to retirees. Thank you very much. And Dr. Herman, we have the same for you. Thank you for your service. And when you feel better, please come by the office, and we've got a whole pile of stuff for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Lou, you can sit, Lou, you can sit down here in the shelf, take the seat.
Thank you.
You get to.
I'm just gonna go home.
As all the official documents are being signed, I do want to thank Laura Herman for her years of service. And as president of the board for the last year, it's been a very challenging year, and she handled it with grace, dignity, and integrity, and far more patience than I think a lot of other people would have had. So I want to thank Laura for her year, four years of service, and especially that last year as president of the board. And I also want to thank Lou. Lou, you've been a rock on the board, a symbol of integrity, of commitment, and of concern for not only the students at the college, but the community and also the faculty staff. So I want to thank you for everything you've been for the college. And the college is a much better place for you having done our work.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item thirteen, Board Organizational Business. Item thirteen point one, Election of Officers for the period of December eleventh, twenty twenty, through December tenth, of twenty twenty-one. I will hear a motion first to nominate a person for President of the Board.
Nominate?
Michael Adams for President.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Any discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Uh, I will now hear a motion to nominate a Vice President for this coming period.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Steve Buffalo for Vice President.
Thank you. May he have a second. Any Board Members can be a second.
I second.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And finally, I'd like to hear a nomination for a member of the Board for the period.
Move to nominate Barbara Gaines.
Thank you. May he have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. So, we do have our officers for the year of December eleventh, twenty twenty, through December tenth, twenty twenty-one. Thirteen point two, Selection of One Board Member to Represent the District in the Election of Members to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization, and Selection of One Board Member to Represent the District in the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. One member may be associated, may be selected for both responsibilities. Ms. Gaines, I understand that you have served in both of those positions?
I have, yes, sir.
And are you willing to continue in those positions?
Are you willing?
If that be the case, may I hear a nomination?
Move approval of Barbara Gaines to serve in both of those capacity.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Any further nominations? Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Barbara. You get to take several more trips to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thirteen point three, Selection of One Board Member to Represent the District in the Anlo Valley School Boards Association for year twenty twenty-one. And again, Ms. Gaines, you have been on that board for a while, and you are an officer of that board. So, are you willing to continue in that capacity?
I am willing to continue in that capacity.
Thank you. May I hear a nomination?
Nominate Barbara Gaines.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thirteen point four, Selection of One Board Member to Represent the District on the Anlo Valley College Foundation Board of Directors for twenty twenty-one. I have served on that board, uh, well, a lot of years. Uh, but I am willing to let another board member take that position if another board member would like to be on the Foundation Board. It meets monthly, uh, in the morning, uh, the second Friday of the month. Uh, and you're primarily concerned with raising funds to support, uh, not only our students, but our faculty and the campus as a whole. So, if anyone like, would like, uh, serve on that board, uh, please let your desires be known at this time. Or I'm willing to serve on that board for another year. And I will accept nominations at this time.
I nominate Michael Adams to represent, uh, the Anlo Valley College Board of Trustees on the College Foundation Board.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
Second.
Any further nominations? Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item thirteen point five, Approval of Superintendent's Organizational Meeting Report. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item thirteen point six, Approval of the Twenty Twenty-One Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Consent Agenda Item fourteen point one. Approval of Consent Agenda Items by Unanimous Consent. May I hear a motion?
移到
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen, Action Items Fifteen Point One. Approval of Resolution Number Twenty Dash Twenty-One Slash Six of Board Trustees Regarding Compensation for Absence of a Member of the Board of Trustees. May I hear a motion?
移到
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Fifteen point two, Approval of Academic Policies and Procedures, APMP Committee's Recommendations of Course Listing. May I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point three, Approval of Professional Service Agreement with MGI Advocacy Incorporated for Legislative Advising Services from January second, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to comment on this agreement.
Certainly.
I know that the California Community League of Community Colleges, I'm sure they have an advocate for us opposed to Sacramento. And I question whether we need to spend thirty-six thousand dollars a year to have our own personal advocate there in Sacramento, considering that, uh, seems like everybody in the world is under budget constraints right now. And I would like this to be reconsidered at another time and, uh, and we have some more funding. Uh, I think we need to set an example to the public. And if it feels absolutely necessary, we're not going to quit. So, I'm gonna go, uh, no, and if they wanna go into that again in the future, uh, reconsider. Thank you.
President, could you, do you want to comment on that? Well, we entered into the agreement with McCallum Group, who had represented the institution prior to my arrival. And, um, the McCallum Group is now, uh, Patrick McCallum has sold that institution, and it is now under the MGI Group. And that's Mark's presentation this morning. Uh, as Mark pointed out, and as Senator Wilk pointed out, we are isolated. Uh, we were out here in the desert, we're treated as a rural college. And having the additional voice in Sacramento was instrumental in protecting the college. Um, Mark and his lobbying firm and his advice to us and the Board over the last year were instrumental and will be instrumental. If the deferrals are, uh, abated for the coming year in, in recognizing and giving the opportunity for that second Bachelor's Degree Program, those kind, those are the things that that single voice does that the League cannot do. The League advocates for all hundred-and-sixteen community colleges at once. And it talks as a single voice on general issues. It does not advocate for single colleges. And the McCallum Group does. And advocates for us, particularly rural colleges. There's a hundred-and-sixteen colleges in the State of California. There's seventy-three districts. But forty-nine of those districts are single college districts. And we, it's imperative that we have a voice. Thank you. Do the Board Members like to participate in the discussion at this time? Thank you. We need to have a motion and a second on that, so I will ask for advice.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Vincent on this part. We do need, uh, we are very isolated. And any additional help would, and, uh, not to point out, but if all the colleges didn't do this, like, if all of them were through, then we wouldn't be having that place. I get that we need to set up other examples of how, you know, all the different colleges and all of California. But I don't believe that this is the right example. Because I think that we do need this voice, we can all the help we can get. As previously stated, we are in desert. We do need this help.
So, you're glad to be here?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes with a four-on-one vote. Item fifteen point four, Approval of Agreement Between Pepsico Incorporated and Anlo Valley College. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point five, Approval to Extend the Use of Office Depot's Cooperative Agreement. May I hear a motion?
移到
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item, item fifteen point six, Approval to Extend Agreement for Vision Services for Students with Wallace Family I Care through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point seven, Approval for the Division of the State Architectural Fees, Cedar Hall, eighteen dash zero-two-one, with major A V funds. May I hear a motion?
移到
Second.
Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item fifteen point eight, Approval for the Division of the State Architectural Fees, Swing Space Two, eighteen dash zero-one-one, with major A V funds. May I hear a motion?
移到 Second.
Discussion? Advice? Approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item sixteen, Information Items. They have three items on the information report. They are in your packet, and you are, they are available for review prior to action later in the year. And they are Anlo Valley College District Facility Services Monthly Report, Updated Design Consultants for Architectural Firms in Contract, and New Administrative Procedures, six-three-two-five, payroll. Item seventeen, Reports and Announcements, seventeen point one. Academic Center, Dan Ryder.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Make sure that everyone can hear you, wave or smile. Yeah, thank you. So, good morning. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna congratulate all the new Board Members and Board Officers. Uh, Michael, you should get seats for next year. And so, seats are gonna fit you well. So, first and foremost, on, on behalf of the Academic Center, I first wanted to offer appreciation gratitude to trustees Laura Herman and Lou Schultz. Thank you for your years of service on the Board. It is, it is appreciated. And we certainly wish you well in your future endeavors. We also welcome our new trustees, uh, Michelle Harvey and Michael Reeves to the Anlo Valley College Board of Trustees. And we extended a warm welcome to you both, and extended invitation to certainly reach out and, and, uh, get to know the set, get to know the faculty, introduce yourselves, so that we can come to, uh, work with you. We also look forward to working with the new Vice President of Academic Affairs, Dr. Saber. In my role, I, I appreciate those that have come before and the tireless work that those that have filled the VPA and intra-VPA positions. It is, it is a, an important, a critical part of our executive ability. And I welcome Dr. Saber. I welcome the opportunity and look forward in the new year to work with her, and with all new members, both not only the Board of Trustees Members and VPA, and of course, the new faculty that, uh, adjunct faculty that have been approved today. I also wanna publicly thank our Information Technology or IT Department. In the last two Senate meetings, public comments have expressed, public faculty members have expressed their gratitude for IT. And I want to publicly thank them for their support, their troubleshooting, their much guidance for faculty and all during this particular time period. It is stressful, right? And it's complicated. And the IT has performed admirably. So, thank you. As the semester of the calendar year comes to an end, I also want to publicly acknowledge the work of all standing Senate participatory and government committees. Um, the work of the administrators, the classified faculty, and students on these committees allows the work of the college to move forward. This semester is certainly presenting new challenges and opportunities to ensure that that work is completed and continues. Um, as illustrated by most recent action, item fifteen point two, the Approval of Academic Policies and Procedures. Such approvals are important, and again, critical to our, our colleges globally. Uh, if you were to look at that item more carefully and see the number of courses that were approved and programmed, you're, you're, you're probably mind. And the extra hours in particular of APP put in. So, again, I wanna express my acknowledgement and gratitude for them. And finally, we wish all of you, um, a happy holidays and safety and health from the Academic Center, especially as we move forward in this new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen point two, Anlo Valley College Federation Teachers, and that is David Adams, that's right.
David, could you use the wireless one over there? We've had some reports, these aren't the A that part, anyway. Thank you. Push the button, she'll go right away. Thank you.
Um, good morning, Board. And first of all, I wanna, I wanted to be here in person, because I think it was very important. When we have outgoing members of the Board, we should always come and pay respect for all the work they've done. So, uh, for, uh, Dr. Herman, I appreciate all your efforts over the past few years. And for Mr. Schultz, I also appreciate your efforts as well. Um, and to our new Board Members, Ms. Harvey, Mr. Reeves, we appreciate it. It's been nice to actually get to meet you and talk to you a couple of days before, and I look forward to continuing that dialogue in the future, okay? And I would extend that also, you know, to our existing Board Members. You know, uh, Mr. Adams, Mr. Buffalo, Ms. Gaines,[1634.46] Mr. Adams, Mr. Buffalo, Ms. Gaines, you guys do great work here from the union's perspective. We appreciate everything we do and we look forward to a more ongoing dialogue in the future. I would also say to our new vice president academic affairs, Dr. Saber. I have nothing the privilege to meet you yet, but it's been a position that we've been looking for to replace for a long time. And from what I understand, you will do a great job and we're looking forward to working with you, okay? And then finally, from the union, we just want to, you know, as we hit the holiday season, just want to let you guys know, I personally wish each and every one to do a happy and safe holiday season. And we look forward to a great two thousand twenty one. It can only get better, guys. And I think you guys know my passion for the college and I know you guys share that. So we look forward to work in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item seventeen point three, Anlo Valley College Federation, class one employees, Anlo Ford.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Mister, Ms. Harmon and Mr. Will, witness deserve in a elected position as a respected honorable and selfless role. And your work is appreciated. Thank you very much for your service to the college and the campus community. Congratulations, Ms. Harvey and Mr. Reese, and welcome, Ms. Saber, as our new vice president of academic affairs. I hope everyone enjoys their winter break and I'm looking forward to twenty twenty one and hopefully no sky. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Item seventeen point four, confidential manager supervisor and administrative employee, Jared Simmons.
He's not here.
Not here? It's hard to tell with that, so I always assume you're somewhere in the audience. Item seventeen point five, associate student organization, Cameron Zabidah.
Cameron is not online.
Not online?
No, he's not online.
Okay. Item seventeen point six, Anlo Valley College Foundation, Diane Knickel.
No, not here.
Not online.
Online?
Not online.
President Adams?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out and let everybody know that for the first time, the endowment of the foundation surpassed eight million dollars.
Thank you. And I will mention since Diane is not here that the board trustees here took a step a couple years ago that was unprecedented among any colleges in the board. Voluntarily chose to do payroll deduction to provide funds for an ongoing scholarship to a student from the college board of trustees itself. And each trustee uses payroll deduction to have twenty dollars of our paycheck removed every month. And no pressure, but every board member's always done that. So the new two board members, if you would choose to do that, that would be great. That allows us to be allowed two five hundred dollar scholarships every year to students. And I know that Diane has said that many of the meetings she goes to with other college foundations, they're just astounding that we have a board of trustees that steps up physically and monetarily to support our students. And I would hope that you would also help us do that in the future.
I would love to do that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, seventeen seven, office of superintendent president, Mr. Peterson.
Just very briefly again, my deepest and sincerest appreciation and thanks to Lou and Laura for their work here at the college over the last, Laura was here five years, Lou was here nine. And we went through an extension and redistricting and all kinds of challenges over that period of time. Twenty twenty has been a unique year and I'm glad I won't be around to see the next time we have a double, double, double year, like twenty twenty or nineteen nineteen or eighteen eighteen. They never work out well. So my thanks to Lou and Laura, it's been a very difficult time. Welcome to Mr. Reese and Ms. Harvey. I'm looking forward to working with you in our office, working with you, and we look forward to your support as well. And to Isabel, thank you for hanging in and thank you for being persistent in our search for what I am very confident will be an outstanding replacement and moving into the position that I look forward to working with you very soon. So and just so everybody knows, she's already at it. She's been working anyway, but she'll be physically here on campus in January. And to everybody else and to everybody here in the room, please have a most blessed holiday season. Be safe, get some time with your family. I know we can't hug each other the way we want to, but you can do virtual hugs and smiles and all those kinds of things. And most important thing is be safe. Thank you all very much. God bless.
Thank you. And board member comments, Senator?
Yeah, I want to say congrats to all of your officers and congratulations to Reese and Harvey. Look forward to working with you guys. And just everybody have a happy holidays and hope to see you guys next year.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey?
Just thank you for all of the love and I look forward to what will be to be. And I'm hoping that everyone will have a safe holiday.
Mr. Reese? I want to express my appreciation to the people of Anlo Valley that have allowed me to be on this court and honored to serve with you and I really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines?
Okay, I've got a few, I'm sorry. First, I want to say to Laura and Lou, it's been a real pleasure to, over the past several years, to, to work with you as a member of the Board of Trustees. And you will be missed, but I know you're going to move on and do great things in other places. I also would like to welcome Mrs. Saber to the Anlo Valley College. We look forward to working with you and you're, you're coming to a great place, so welcome. I also want to welcome our two new board members, Michelle and Michael, to the Board of Trustees. We look forward to working with both of you. I want to say that, that as an educator, I know how hard it is, it is for faculty to engage students in this distance learning. No one really understands that unless you actually get the opportunity to see them doing that in the classroom. So I want to say to our faculty and to all of our, first our faculty, please, I have the opportunity to talk to some, some of our freshman students. Please continue doing what you're doing. And, and also at this time, I know that we don't give grades, students earn grades. But I want to just say to our faculty, I, I ask for a little empathy for our students at this time too because this, this is really, really difficult for them as well. Sometimes there's technical difficulties that they, that they go through. And so I just want to say thank you to our faculty and keep up the great work. To our classified staff, I know the same thing. It's not easy during the COVID to come to work and, and sometimes also there's such great concerns about health and the risk factors. And so kudos to all of our classified and confidential staff who, who show up every day knowing that, that they sometimes are putting their life at risk. And I also want to thank Ed and Patty. I don't know what we'd do without our president. You're doing a great job, Ed. And Patty, thank you for keeping us so prepared throughout the year. And I just want to wish everybody a safe, first and foremost, a safe holiday season. And I, I look forward to the day that we return to normalcy and see this place filled with students again. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buffalo?
Well, first of all, welcome aboard, Michelle and Michael. And feel free to participate, make motions, seconds, jump right in. So I know when I was first, I was always reluctant to kind of jump in, but. And Laura and Lou, thank you very much for the contributions that you've, that you've made to the college. It's been, it's been an incredible time and we've done a lot of pretty incredible things, so I'm excited. I know when talking to our students, they're really excited to be back on campus. I've talked to several students lately who are sitting this out because they don't like online or they don't feel comfortable or they don't do well at it. And some of these are pretty good students, but it just doesn't work for them. So hopefully summer, we will be back in classes. I certainly know we will be back in classes this fall coming up. And that's great news from the foundation, eight, eight million dollars. They worked really hard to track that. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. And I would also like to welcome our new board members and working with them over the next year and working with all the construction groups on campus. This is my fifth time as president of the board, so I think this year might be the most challenging of the five, but I'm looking forward to it. I enjoy challenges and I think that we will persevere and we will survive this and move on to much better things. The date of our next meeting is January eleventh, twenty twenty one. We will be out of the twenty twenties, into the twenty twenty ones, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, everybody stay still.